Order for the Casko Township Board of Citizens. Our first thing is to pledge allegiance to America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. We have some extra chairs there. Feel free to sit, take them, sit down, take a seat. Okay, we get to the consent agenda. Is there anyone wishing to add anything to the agenda?
You have to switch the order for...
Yeah, I'd like, well, my thing, I'd like to move K, L, and M. Move that between A and B. We have a couple of young mothers here, a couple of kids that need to get in bed by eight, and you have one on a new board. All right.
That's a baby.
Same as you say right there. Okay, any additions or other amendments to the agenda? Okay, any questions on any other portion of the consent agenda? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent of the board.
Okay, we have a motion to support to approve the consent agenda. We're moving the three agenda items. Okay. Any questions? Roll call vote.
Anderson asks.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Silver, yes.
Okay, first thing is citizens' comment. Does anybody like to address the board?
Yes, I would if I could.
Okay, yeah, Jim, you'll get another chance toward the end of the meeting.
I hope I can stay up that late, but can I start now?
Well, I have some, if we could wait till the end, I appreciate that, okay? Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, you'll get another chance at the end of the meeting to talk, okay? Okay, the next one is banners for veterans. Gentlemen?
You guys are up.
I told you, Ben, I'm here for... I'm going to disrupt the decorum of the reading by crowding in the wall. I'm not here to complain. I'm not here to make you spend money you don't have. And I'm also here to apologize.
For what?
I'm outnumbered anyway. On your side, nobody looks up to you. The apology is because I should have been here about two years ago. And this is with respect to the Bluewater area falling here was Banner Project. I mean, we hope some people are aware of it at this point. And there's no cost at all for your board. And so the apology, asking you to spend money you don't have, is two of the things out of the way. My name's Ed Wechler. I'm the project manager for the Bluewater area falling here was Banner Project. The project before you is, and I'm only going to do bullet points so I can get my big mouth away from the podium. The project before you has been six years in the making. It's designed to honor St. Clair County GIs who have died while in service to their country. The banners will be distributed to cities, townships, and villages throughout the county three and a half weeks before Memorial Day, and then they will come down immediately after Memorial Day. They will not be used for any other public display, promotion, fundraiser. It's only the three weeks that they're out. We do private displays like families, but again, the emphasis is private. This project was strategically designed to be non-competitive amongst communities and non-divisive among the residents. Imagine something we could all bring on. It was surgically designed to bring us together for three weeks out of the year, every year. The project actually became a reality in 2021, but we started working on it and researching in 2017. The project is all about us and we, not I and me. These banners reflect the sacrifice of young people who grew up immediately but never grew old. A qualifier for having a banner is not just limited to killed in action, but if that GI died while in military service to the country or died of service-connected wounds, he or she qualifies for a banner. Many communities throughout the U.S. do a similar project. However, we believe that this project, your project, is the only one in the United States that is county-wide. Us and we, not I and me. We didn't want the chest-beating bravado of look what we did and you didn't. Our intention is for this to spread so that we can be part of something. And... He disappeared already.
He's there.
It is my understanding that this lower life form of humanity over here is known by a few people on the board. Jim and I go back about, well, we go back almost as far as my hairline, about 60 years, and he has, as of this past May, has brought it to Macomb County, starting with Richmond. So they'll have their banners in 2024. The banner template is copyrighted and owned by our DVA. Our dream is, like I said, is that surrounding counties are interested in following us, and if they're willing to meet the same display criteria that we have established just those three weeks, we could consider making the template available to them. As of this date, we have scanned 432 photographs of the 650-plus St. Clair County GIs who have died in service. I have brought, I provided to you a list of Casko Township and surrounding area GIs whose photographs we're looking for. If you have a social media page or any mechanism whereby you can reach out to your constituents to make that available to the masses, we would greatly appreciate that. There is no cost to the families or friends of the fallen for the scan of the photograph or the production of a banner simply because that family already paid. We don't even, that's not even something that's up for discussion. Put your checkbook, your purse, your wallet away. Your money's no damn good. Your family paid. We are currently in the process of incorporating the project with the board of directors that will oversee the display of the sacrifices long after we are all gone. We do not handle cash, check, or contributions of any kind. We are 100% volunteer, research-driven, encouraged, and funded. There are no financial or security perks given or implied to any volunteers. Therefore, all contributions go directly to the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. No one has access to these contributions. The foundation's only goal is to pay the bills to produce the banners or for marketing. This is by a written contract. We wanted the potential benefactors to see this project as transparent and trustworthy from day one. If you can't read their names on a tombstone, if you can't see their face on a photo in a book, then they are forgotten. We leave no one behind. If you think this project is just a token for Memorial Day, Jim knows I have trouble with this. I have to tell you, if I had to dine for every time we were scanning a photograph, just the simple process of being across the table from a family member who brings us a photo to scan, and we hand it back over. And I have heard them say, outside of my family, you realize you're the first person in decades who's even mentioned that name. And with that, I will... This is probably the most powerful one we've scanned so far. His dad said, his dad Kurt, who used to run Centennial Arms in Marine City, the gun shop, said that he believes that somebody in the bunker in Afghanistan said, hey, Sean, check this out. And what I want you to do is to read the name of this one. Whoop, sorry, forgetting I'm in the front row, which usually I try not to be. Then you get assigned to a committee. Excuse me. You read that back there? And I would ask you to read this one. Father and son. They were both killed in the line of duty nine years, nine days apart. February 10th, 1945, February 19th, 1954. So the son. And if this is not an anomaly, you'll see it.
Sixteen.
Yep. Gene Craig was eight days shy of his 17th birthday. Thomas Fraser from Goodell's was six weeks shy of his 17th birthday. Tom Brokaw is right. They were the greatest. The difference in size is because we custom make the banners if you have existing hardware to display them on. So the ale is somewhat smaller. Do you have a park?
Not yet.
Okay. So... You have a meeting room. There are grounds at all four corners. You can hang them inside. And heaven forbid, of course, this is an anomaly for me. Sure it is for you, but it's rare that the population ever attends council meetings. But, oh, you've got a meeting room? What meetings do you have here? Anything to get them in here. And once the word gets out that they're displayed regardless of what time it is. So there are five of the lead, yeah, this is the one.
This is draft at this point, and I'm going to go with the city council on Monday coming, and we'll do a vote on this. As Ed said, these are copyrighted.
Yeah, this template is.
We don't copyright each other, or we don't break the copyright law. And I'll take this to the city council and see if they can make input, maybe. They can still make changes to this.
Jim, would those go on the... Where they post all the ones in town?
Yes.
For like the little ladies and the seniors?
And it'll only be up?
For three weeks.
Three weeks. In that area by the memorial there.
The idea that we wanted to convey with this is Memorial Day is not, first and true, a weekend of summer. Memorial Day is not barbecue. Memorial Day is not the official start. The idea behind this, especially with some of these photographs that are just, in many cases, are just gut-wrenching, is to get somebody to look at them one right after the other and say, "Damn it, and I bitch because my neighbor doesn't cut his grass as often as I should." These kids, and they were all kids, they died for something. And the idea is perpetuating their sacrifice. That's as short a period that you're ever going to get out of me unless you've got questions, then it's on you.
Now, different realities. I noticed they hang them from like bloodpools and that stuff like that. I was thinking like, if we could like down in the Ayr district, a lot of people would see them down there. Just a moment, so. So you could hang them down, I was thinking that, because a lot of people would travel through Ayr at the corner of Second Re, Second Highway, Palms Road.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
Can we just make them available? With respect to hardware, again, I'm not here to make you spend money you don't have.
Right.
But the Community Foundation, which has been our partner in this thing for almost six years, they have grants available. That's a loan you don't have to pay back. Or hardware. So what we really need from this board is what size you want them. And like I said, we custom make them to the size of your existing hardware. If you're in the planning stages, figure out what size those are going to be. And because we're only going to make one, you know, how am I going to say, one batch per community? But you'll notice that there's no corporate logo, there's no sponsorship ribbon on it. And the beauty of what has been accomplished over the past six years is because those things are missing. When you have someone drive through your community and they see the banners and there's no corporate logo or sponsorship, holy cow, this community did this for that family. So it reflects on this board, it reflects on the citizens. And I'll tell you something, it might be a little bit hard to believe. We have never had a fundraiser or been involved in one. And the money is there. It's just the population, once on social media and once on the media that we do have available, started sending in contributions. We still have a long way to go and a lot of money to raise, but it's a barometer of the quality of people in this county. Shut up, Ed.
And do you know how many for Casko that you guys already know about?
Was it you I talked to on the phone? I sent you a list of just Casko Township, which you have before you, of course, is surrounding areas that we're looking for. I believe, I believe there's no more than six. But we're finding, I mean, we started off at 538, we're at 660 right now. People, well, the ones, the difference is the number of people that we found that died in service that nobody knew about, including three from Vietnam. So...
Well, yeah, we'll take a look at, you know, different options. See what we can do. So they can get the maximum amount of exposure.
Yeah, that's up to you. We don't tell you how to hang them or where. But there are options, like if you were planning on hardware or a park in the future, figure out what size you want.
Right.
And then that's, you know, settled. I'm not running a meeting, but...
I have a question. Yeah, you had asked at the beginning, Ed, if we had a park, and we do it at our property. And I think it would give a lot of exposure and awareness if that was mowed by the road, and they could be displayed there, maybe. Well, but...
First of all, that's...
It's just not... Yeah, but I mean, I think that would be a great place for like the big ones, I don't know. But you said that there's hardware that can display them outside, but kind of like they are here except staked in the ground?
Can you please stand on the coast of the...
Yeah, we don't have coast, though.
Well, they have the hardware. Ian, put the posts up in hardware brackets.
Oh, we have side work.
Yes, yes. We're in a position to print banners for Memorial Day for 2024. You may not be in a position to allocate funds that you don't have for a park or whatever, but there's no reason why they couldn't be displayed in your meeting room.
Right.
Okay, so just figure out what size it is you want, and we'll go from there. One of the things that I would suggest to you that we have found out is if they're put up like on a country road and you had a significant number of them, it becomes a traffic hazard. People will slow down to read them. So the park might be a hole down the road or your meeting room. But I thank you for the opportunity to address you. Sorry I went on for so long and tell you.
So we just contact you when we're ready?
Yeah, I have rack cards that are available that I can leave for your... You know, for you to hand out, yes. And if you could take those names and put them out on social media, those are the photographs of this area that we're looking for. We have provided Jim six, seven photographs that Richmond is putting up. Because during World War II, they didn't do boundaries as critical as it is now.
Right.
You know, so a lot of the ones they're looking for is St. Clair County. And again, it's us and we, not I and me. Thank you for your time.
I just found another person who passed through the National Cemetery. So it wasn't recorded in Richmond. Another thing, is anything I can do to help?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I feel like a meatball. Sorry, my two strands of spaghetti.
I can see that. You guys do blessed work. Work that won't be forgotten. All right, moving on. I'd like to do item K, Resolution 23-12, to establish the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We're standing up an advisory committee to advise on matters relating to our park, on recreational programming and stuff like that. So this will be an advisory committee owned by one, as you'll see later, one member from the township board. We have four residents here. So the amendment, the resolution is the one that says at the top, amended 9/11/23. It says, whereas Casko Township desires to provide managed recreational programs and facilities, and whereas Casko Township desires to provide recreational funding to manage recreational programs and facilities, and whereas the Casko Township Board desires to establish an advisory committee to provide recommendations to the board, garden policies, programs, and facilities to serve the recreational needs of the community. Now therefore, let us resolve that Casko Township Board creates the Casko Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and will appoint five members to serve the advisory committee to advise the township board with respect to management and maintenance of recreational programs and facilities, Casko Township. Okay.
I'll move to adopt the Resolution 2023-12.
Okay.
How's it spread?
Okay, we have a motion, support to adopt Resolution 2023-12. Okay, roll call vote on that. Okay, simple, okay. Okay, simple vote. All in favor of adopting Resolution 2023-12? All aye. Okay, motion carries. Good deal, okay. Now we have the Casko Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee bylaws. You'll see you have two versions, the one that has some strike throughs. I sent it to our attorney, and she looked it over and just advised some changes. I modeled this after Irish Townships. If I, it was a commission, parks commission. Well, this is just an advisory committee, so it's not as stringent. So Chris went there, struck out some of the the items, and then basically it calls for, you have five members. One will be a township board member. There'll be two members for a two-year term and two members for a three-year term. And all terms will be renewed at three-year terms. So if they have stagger and that, so you know, let's say everyone decides not to go, we can't have any advisory. It goes into officers in duty, chairperson, vice chair, and secretary. And it hears about meetings. Fourth Monday of every month or a date established by the committee. So once the committee stood up, if they decide, hey, you know, because of certain thing, you know, young children, if you could have it earlier in the day, you know, that'd be fine. Also talks about the parliamentary authority that they've, the rules of order through Robert's rules of new order, you would revise. And that they can stand up subcommittees to help them get certain projects done. Okay.
I'll move that we adopt the Casko Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee bylaws.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we have a motion to support to accept the Casko Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee Advisory bylaws. Okay. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, I have appointments for the Casko Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I'd like to appoint the following individual to the Casko Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, with a term starting one October 2023 and ending listed below. As supervisor, one of my duties is to make selections of township boards. It's approved by the township committee, whether it's the Zone Board of Appeals, Planning Commission Board of Review, or now the Parks and Recreation Committee with the township's approval, with the board's approval here. I have, I'd like to appoint Gina Kazinsky as the board representative, Jennifer Johnstone, right there, and Brian Hake for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2026. We have Maria Olshefska, and Debbie Morgan for a two-year term ending September 30th, 2025.
I'm sorry, could these people stand so I can memorize their names? All right, okay. All right.
Yeah, Mr. Hake couldn't make it tonight, so...
Very nice to see you.
Thank you for doing this.
For Gina's, do we need to put an date of the eviction next year? Just in case she doesn't matter, don't it?
Yeah, that's good.
Just so it's not attached to her as a person, but maybe the...
Yeah.
The board representative.
So it would be like November, you know, like a...
November 30th.
November 7th, if you're election?
Yeah, but don't the term of office end like November 30th? Isn't the term of office ending like November 30th?
I'm thinking this year.
No, it's 2024.
Yes, last year, but I was thinking of this year's election. It might pass.
Oh, no. No elections this year.
We have an Acre Bay election.
So Gina's doing it for us now, and for as long as... So just as long as we have a board designation.
Right. Yeah, and I kind of like, it's a nice mix of people because we have, we have some people who've been involved with us a while, you know, and we have some young people. Young families, that's great. Okay, so we're going to have it to the end of Gina's.
Thank you. November 5th.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. Okay. Okay, all right. All right, okay, does anyone want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to appoint the five people that you stated who are in the Casco Township Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I'll support that.
We have a motion support to accept the five individuals listed. There's appointments to the Casco Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Do we need to do a roll call vote on this or simple? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, oh, she carries. All right.
Thank you.
Then you can get them.
We appreciate it.
And which is that, so you're a farrier, right? You shoot horses, huh?
Yep.
All right, take care.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Bye, Maria.
All right. Okay. Now back to item B. Resolution 23-10 for United Way of St. Clair County. So this is, this is a thing where they're reaching out and they want the local communities to help get the word out for the, for the good work United Way does in St. Clair County. So we have, we have, we'd say we have a resolution supporting their efforts here. Proclamation designating is fall 2023 to United in purpose for the United Way of St. Clair County. It says, I'll read it up.
Double think.
You want me to?
No.
Okay.
Everybody's read this, right?
Right.
This has nothing. This is advertising for the United Way. It just says that we support their efforts.
Okay, you make a resolution?
Yes.
I should note, they came and presented to us last year and they made it really clear that all of their efforts are devoted to people in St. Clair County exclusively. And they're very heavy volunteer participation. So it's a good, they do good stuff and they do it here.
All right, make a resolution.
I did.
Okay, anyone supports it?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion support to adopt Resolution 2023-10. Proclamation designate fall 2023 to United in purpose for United Way of St. Clair County. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, draft cemetery draft ordinance.
Sure, so we don't have a cemetery ordinance and we need to have one. So I put this in our packet and it doesn't absolutely need to get approved today. If we have corrections or questions or if we want to add other things, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. If anybody, like if we don't have any questions or whatnot, we could approve it today. I do have some corrections.
Okay.
It's a good template.
Yeah.
Steve did it. Steve, our planner, she's looking at it.
Is our attorney gonna change this to make it over yet?
I did not send it to the attorney. Steve, our planner, did it. So...
No, I just have a few things marked, but I think this, I think this covers quite, quite a bit of things. I like the, I like the ground maintenance idea. And I particularly liked the section six with the grave opening charges. Just caring for the footing and foundations. We've had so much trouble with that at other cemeteries in the area, so that's nice that that's covered. That only one person will be buried in one space, that's always helpful. No, it's, I think this is, this is very well thought out. And I think we should go forward with this while we're, we are doing our best in going to these meetings. Thank you very much for that.
We learn a lot.
And getting something together that the community can be proud of.
I like the portion where it limits the amount of graves a family can have. Because a lot of times, we got that at St. Michael's.
We have that at ours. We have like six plots that are like, you know, there's cement barricades around it or whatever, and there's two.
Yeah.
And they're like from the 1800s.
I'm gonna buy it for all my families who are buried together where families move away or don't want to get buried there.
This covers a lot of that, and so it's very well thought out.
So a lot of cemeteries put limits on that, so that doesn't happen.
Well, the only couple, the couple items that I saw on here, on page three, section five, that first, letter A, I'm thinking we need to just attach the fee sheet that we approved last, what was that, to the ordinance.
Yeah, I would have on there refer to the...
I just put C attached fee sheet, you're pressing.
But then, those were all to be modified.
Yes, absolutely. And then on the next page, on page four, letter C, we changed the width for the single marker to 36 inches wide or 70 inches if it's a double marker. Because those were the...
That's what.
Dan, our mate.
Our caretaker.
He didn't want to be called the sexton, the caretaker. He gave us those.
He does all the foundations and he gave me all the dimensions that they can do.
And he's amazing.
I've been told.
And very informative. He gave us a whole lesson on stuff.
Oh, we're lucky to have him.
He takes care of 19 cemeteries.
Wow. And I know he knows what he's talking about.
Now, does he, how deep a deep those foundation book?
It's 36 inches.
Okay, good.
Is this the only one that came to the cemetery here? Is that what we're talking about?
That's how we have.
Yeah, that's just, that's the one that, that's the townships. The other ones are churches, they don't know.
I wasn't here last month.
No, it's not. I talked about the sign.
Yeah, there's a great big sign here. Now this is good.
And if they need to make corrections later on, we can get them ordered down.
All right, so you say you're making a motion to?
I am to adopt the cemetery ordinance for Casco Township.
We have support.
Well, I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion support to draft, to adopt a cemetery ordinance for Casco Township, St. Clair County. Okay, we roll call vote on this.
I'm almost wondering if we need to do a resolution. If we do, next, we're running to discuss it as a resolution. We can just approve it tonight and then it's a resolution.
For a resolution.
So let's do, I think we should do a roll call. Okay, Anderson, yes.
Dennis.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes?
Stover, yes.
And we're also going to have a folder. We're gonna put this in there and then we have another form that we just made up today. So when people come in to buy...
They'll have a plaque.
Information packet, so that they have this. We're gonna put the funeral home information in there, the B schedule, the crematorium information.
All the monument information, so when they go to order the monument, it has, I have a little sheet that tells.
Do we have any idea how many plots are yet available if we don't expand?
We have quite a bit. We've got all shapes.
And we've talked about it before. Will we have the square footage to have ourselves a column burial?
I think we can, that remain in the front, it can kind of, I think we can kind of incorporate it in there maybe.
I think that would be nice. We were talking about the whole scanner and putting a bridge and doing that remaining thing and then you could do a plaque and then they buy a plaque.
All right.
They don't get like an actual marker, but we can have some kind of plaque and put the name on that.
Designers were at the conference that talked about it.
They have all kinds of... I think that'll just be the column burial, that's just a little down the road.
Yeah, it's down the road, but I just wanted to make sure.
They have all variants, you can put along funnels.
Oh, yeah, that we, we left a little space for it.
We do, yeah.
Do a little advanced planning on that. Got any trees out of the way, the scrub trees.
And there's, there's a spot like in the old part of the cemetery where there's nothing, but we're gonna leave that for now because we're not sure. Because if it, if people were buried before 1935 or in the 1930s, they used wood boxes.
They used what?
Wood boxes instead of the cement vaults. So they, you know, disintegrate through time and whatnot, so you don't know.
I remember coming with St. Michael's and we drove the truck over.
Well, thank you for your work on this. The townships needed to update this for decades.
Yes.
Decades, I'm really glad to see that we're moving forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, good, yeah. All right, we have item D, bids for janitorial service. We weren't happy with our, our clean service that we had at the hall here. So we solicited bids here for new janitorial service to keep our hall clean. We had Rea Dome, we have Great Lakes Building Solutions. They do a total cost of, they do $96 a week for 52 weeks, that's $4,992. Clean windows, $75 twice a year, $150 for a total of $5,142.
Did you, when you talked to them, well, maybe do like a deep cleaning like this, this guy?
Then we have Deborah Ward. Deborah Ward, she, they're all working at the same, we put out a standard bid package at the... I had to go through, she does, Deborah Ward, busy bee cleaning, will do the current cleaning cost 20% off for the first year.
So what we're paying now, she'll give us 20% off of that? When you talked to these, did you decide, like if we're gonna do a year contract, two-year contract? Was that talked about at all?
Well, I was just nearby here. And then the last one, we have JJ Cleaning Service. Okay. Hey, okay, for 52 weeks cleaning for $11,700. Two biyearly, well, biyearly window cleans for $500. And deep cleaning for, we have for the carpet, $684 a year and for the tile and grout, $1,216 a year.
Just for information, what is our current cost, so we can compare actual cost?
I think it's $350 a month. $300. But we can't use our current one?
Yeah.
They resent it?
Yeah, they quit yesterday. So they'll quit at the end of the month. All right.
So you have like all three of these, what's your...
I, all three of them, I thought were very enthusiastic. They all wanted to expand their business and do a good job for us.
That wasn't helpful.
There was a fourth one, you didn't send it in, but you was also very...
Any references from them? Or businesses that they already previously do or done?
No, I didn't ask for anything like that, so...
Any of them vocal?
They're all vocal. You want me to get references from them?
The only problem is, is we don't have anybody to...
Well, we could, you know, special meeting.
A special meeting? For what?
Oh, if you want me to get references on these?
I don't know, I'm thinking of quitting my day job.
If I want to lock, I'll come and lock the windows. I'll bring it out.
I've watched all my windows.
What's your pleasure? I have no preference. I, I like the way Ms. Ward categorizes or gives me a little bit more idea of what she's wanting to do.
Yeah, Ms. Ward is eager to do windows too. She has window cleaning equipment.
We don't have spec, we have specs exactly what we've asked them to do.
Yeah.
Whatever they say, we really have a set of our specs.
Well, if she's given us 20% off.
Well, then...
Maybe we should try her out.
Let's, let's try out Ms. Ward.
I do like this one, this Great Lakes, I like all the stuff.
I like them all. They were very nice.
I like how listed all the different cleaning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel the same about that, but she's so much cheaper and there's no downside.
Wait a minute, you were saying that our current ones, how much per month?
$375.
I believe it's $375.
A month?
It's, I think it fluctuates depending on how many weeks, how many weeks, when a month. Because I want to say I'm done either $350 or $375 before too, so I think it just depends on four or five weeks. It's not a flat rate. So it's like three or $200, I think, yeah. Like $70 a month. And that was included in the vessel? They never.
$75.
Okay. Do I have?
I mean, we can try one a month for a year. If it don't work out, then we can back.
Is it a year agreement or is it a, that will?
I was gonna promote for a year.
Did you talk to them about that when you interviewed them?
Yeah.
And they were good with the year?
Yeah. Matter of fact, she said she knew over 20% below our current one for one year and then will change next year. All right. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to offer a contract to Ms. Ward for one year at 20% off our current costs. And we'll talk renewal at the end of the contract here.
I'll support it.
No, is Ms. Ward aware of what we're paying now? When she interviewed you?
What's that?
Is she, is she aware of what we're paying now?
No, it just works to our advantage, doesn't it?
All right, okay. Okay, we have a motion and we have support to accept busy bee cleaning service LLC for Ms. Deborah Ward. Okay, we need further discussion. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dennis.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next is R X Scape's and Stone Removal Fall Cleanup at the Hall in Office. This team came out here, they did our plantings earlier. They come up to do some maintenance, clean them up and get ready for the fall. And they did a fantastic job on the grounds, I mean, impeccable. And we need Hayterville for $2,000 and $2,215. And we need to pay their bill for two thousand dollars and two thousand two hundred fifteen dollars.
Support.
Have a motion, support to pay RX Escape and Stone Removal Service. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries, okay. Alright, every year we get funding from the, it's the local road funding assisted program options. This is a fifty-fifty match that the county gives us every year to, to do road projects of our choosing. I was talking it over with Mike Zoplitz, the area foreman for the road commission. We have two options. We have option one, ditching for fifty thousand dollars with a fifty-fifty match. Sinclair County Road Commission compares twenty-five thou, contributes twenty-five thousand, Casco Township, twenty-five thousand. Option two, a one and a half inch asphalt overlay of Sinclair Highway from Church to Beatty World for a hundred and seventy-two thousand with a fifty-fifty match. Sinclair, Sinclair County Road Commission contributes eighty-six thousand, Casco contributes eighty-six thousand. Both options, there's a lot of pluses to it. Of course, we always need ditching. I mean, I always tell people, if I had one wish, I'd have a crew just ditching the township, clean out the ditches and drain. It'd be like the crew that paints the map now, break, it takes them seven years to paint it, and once they're done, they start all over again. Casco Township is like all the other townships in the county, southern Sinclair County. It's on the Luvio Plain of Lake Huron, so it's flat and ill-drained. Also, we have a lot of building on roads that never had houses before, and a lot of these ditches are still the old farm ditches. So we always have, we have a need. Option two, okay, there's a need, option two, we get the more money from the county. It's a mile of overlay on Sinclair Highway. We've been starting this several, a few years ago, where we started to repaint overlay Sinclair Highway, starting at Mira Road, working ourselves westward. There's drawbacks to the two, with the one, option two, if we hold off on Sinclair Highway, it's just gonna get more expensive to do the asphalt in next year. Option one, drawback is, there's always, you know, drawbacks of ditching. You want water to go somewheres. I've talked to the county about other options to create some money. I know some townships, I've heard of things where they didn't put limestone down for a couple of years, to do ditching. I was strong, advised strongly by the, our area foreman not to do that, because our roads down here are in great shape compared to those communities that, you know, skip the limestone, putting it on the road there.
We just got chloro, I think some of us got chloro.
Yeah, they just did chloride here. Yeah, or yesterday too. Yeah. So, yeah, so.
So it's not a set amount, like we can't, for option two, they're gonna do half, which is eighty-six. We can't like do the ditching and pay twenty-five and then have like the, the rest of the eighty-six or something else. Do more ditching?
Yeah, well, next, okay, there's some, actually some good news. We have, we have some money in the drain fund. There is a culvert on Springborn Road, right before, between Church and Beatty, closer to Beatty, that needs to be replaced in the next year or two. It's bad. And there was talk about that ARCA money that was gonna go for the Marine City Highway Corridor. Well, now, the county commissioners is gonna split that up. The county's gonna keep some to do some of their projects and the board of commissioners are gonna give one to each district. I was talking with Commissioner Rushing, and he says he'd like to give it back to the townships for roads, for them to use that. But that's not a done deal yet. And if we get ahold of that, we, like, I had said in a previous meeting, last February, the township engineers gave me a list of seven culverts that cross the county drains that are gonna need to be replaced in the next several years. So, plus we have ditching to do, so. It's always, I mean, and this infrastructure, problem with us is, when you have a semi-rural community like Casco Township is, when people look further apart, it's tough to raise the capital in order to do a lot of these infrastructure projects.
Do we get to choose where the ditching goes?
Oh yes. Yeah, we sure do.
And we have people waiting on the list that desperately need ditching on their property? You have that list?
What's that? Where you wanna start from?
Any, any single one, pick one, Jim.
Kelly, we have identified, we identified down on Springborn Road is an area.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, there's multiple places along Springborn Road there.
Yeah.
So.
I, you know, I've been purposely looking at that asphalt between Sinclair, between Church and Beatty. It is crumbling a bit on the sides. But eighty-six thousand dollars for, I, I'd rather see, I'd rather see ditching.
I agree.
But, but the only problem, okay, just.
And I know, it gets more expensive because, yeah.
And also, too, if we do ditching this year, the next year we have to do, we should do, keep in mind to do another mile Sinclair Highway. Because the longer we put that off, and the tear rates more, it's gonna cost more to rebuild it. Just that, I just wanted to pause that.
I know, I know, I know.
Too bad they can't give us eighty-six for ditching, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know why they don't do that, but.
What difference does it make?
Well, the county does all the ditching right now, the county road crews themselves. When they do asphalt overlay, that's done by a contractor.
Yeah.
So, so it's, I mean, both are desperately needed, I'm not debating that.
I'm going for option one.
Me too.
Make sure.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, make the motion to adopt option one, for ditching for fifty thousand dollars with a fifty-fifty match. Sinclair County Road Commission contributes twenty-five thousand, Casco Township, twenty-five thousand. So there would be resolution.
Eleven, twenty, twenty-three dash eleven.
Okay, twenty, twenty-three, eleven. Okay, so you're gonna adopt that?
I will adopt that.
Okay, you're supporting it, Kelly?
I am.
Okay. Okay, since this is, involves money, we'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Resolution. Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay.
Does everybody say yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just to caveat, next year, I think it's imperative we do another mile Sinclair Highway.
Well, tell them to give us a good cost then, because they know it's coming.
Maybe we'll get some that are.
Yeah, maybe we'll get, if we, if we tell them we're gonna do this next year and to watch their costs coming in, and to keep it at eighty-six thousand, so we can afford to do this. The road isn't quite great enough that, it is on the, on the sides, I can see that, or slow down.
What if they just fix the sides? What if they just fix the sides? They do patching on the sides, alright.
It's all or nothing, tell them we'll do it next year, but tell them to keep the costs under ninety thousand dollars.
If you can keep, rinse the oil at that one.
Well, I'll work on that next year.
Okay, item G, building department requires zip drive for building plans.
Can we have Brenda talk about that?
Well, Brenda doesn't really know much, other than the short conversation that we had the one day, where there's a concern right now for space. We have no room for anything anymore. The plans that we get are uncontainable in our office. And I don't know how much room we'll have even once the expansion takes place. So I believe that Jennifer and Vicky did a little bit of research for us. And I don't quite know where we would obtain the zip drive. It would require the applicant to provide to the building department, in addition to their physical plans, a zip drive with the identical information that they submit in hard copy. So that eventually, if we had them now, we could get rid of, I mean, we'd have so much more room in our office.
Well, if it was a fire or something, we'd have it. And it puts it into the software, so, and when, if we need to look something up, you know, like next year, the year after.
We do, it's an automotive industry, we've been doing that for years.
And if it can be integrated to be a software that we can access, we wouldn't be pulling out files.
Right.
B.S.N.A. has been a wonderful software program that I was adamantly against.
Yes.
But it is absolutely wonderful. And anything to save space, even with the lack of room we have right now, even in the future, the way the building department has exploded over the last couple of years, I, I do think it would be beneficial. And we have our child of the twenty-first century, my Katie Holk, or Kate McCall now.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we need to be trained in the software, Katie is more than capable of bringing me up to speed.
Just talking about one of these, you just do thumb drives.
Uh huh, I think that's correct.
We, we use that in automotive industry for years.
Well, I don't know if people are aware, but we have to keep those building files forever. And some of them can be.
So we just have to investigate?
We just have to, we just need to tell people that they have to bring it on up.
Okay.
Is there a software that we need to specify that they have to, how long is it drive? And the thumb drive width? In other words, if you just get it in a format and you can't access, maybe Roland knows.
So you give them.
We'd probably have to talk to the B.S.N.A. and see.
On what to bring in?
Oh, if you retrieve that then, if you wanted to do it in the office, is that one this?
Yeah.
You would retrieve the.
We'd have to go into the SNA and pull up the file.
Alright, so, okay. You would be able to get hold.
We wouldn't be able to, you would still have the hard.
We'd have the print, we'd have the hard. This is just for backup in case there's a fire.
Alright. Okay, so I guess we may need a motion there.
I'll make a motion to approve requiring a flash drive for building plans in the building department.
Support. Okay, a motion, support for, for required zip drives for building plans to be submitted to the building department. Any other further discussion?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Would we need to pay more money to have such access? Would it be something that the SNA would charge?
I don't, no, one hundred percent, I don't think so, but we could call the SNA tomorrow if you wanna do that and do find out.
I have to call them in the morning. Oh, thank you, Nancy.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Okay, okay, motion carries. Alright, yeah, no. Matter of fact, Katie told me my cell phone, hopefully I would get it. Okay, we have one, item H, revoke bond permit forty-two sixty-three. This was for a dish wireless cell tower co-location and equipment. The bond expired and.
It expires within the next few days.
Okay.
And we need to revoke that bond?
It's been our experience, nine times out of ten, the cell tower co-location permits are told by companies who subcontract to Texas or Colorado or whatever, we never see them again. They do the installation and we, they never call for a final.
Yeah, we had those ones, earlier this year, they were expired years ago.
So this is gonna happen anyway, so we figured, alright, I'll make a motion to revoke bond, or the bond for the permit forty-two sixty-three.
Support.
Should we wait until David's check until the seventh, maybe?
Two.
Isn't it expires on the sixteenth?
Oh, yeah, yeah, don't forget that, yeah, yeah.
Alright, you agree with the modified motion?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion, support to revoke bond permit number forty-two sixty-three. It will expire on the seventeenth, well expires the sixteenth, and we'll wait for the seventeenth for officially to revoke it.
Yes.
Okay, we'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, this is revoke bond of permit number four zero five one. This was for detached garage with lean-to. At seven, seventy-five fifty, Teddy Cut Road. Mr. Nolan Smith. Brenda, you wanna give us, Brenda, roll in the background on that?
Well, I believe that what you had in front of you is every attempt that the building department has made to work with this gentleman and to prod him along to finally getting a final, even though he did work with no permits. And his permit and bond were both long expired. And as you'll see, I believe that in your information, there was a stop work order that was placed at the property site. The gentleman was there when the building official took the stop work order. They, they had an exchange, and Roland urged him to work with the township, to which I don't know what he replied, but we have had nothing. It made its way to the assessor's office, and it sent off a total alarm to her because unless a building project reaches a final building and receives a certificate of occupancy, she is unable to put it on the tax rolls.
Can I jump in here real quick?
Sure.
Because this is a perfect time. I think as a board, we need to come up with a game plan of how to handle things like this. Because he paid two hundred and fifty dollars for his bond. I have pictures of his barn. He has a commercial glass door and windows. It's very big. A urinal with a panel. That's the inside. That's not gonna be a pole barn. He's gonna be running a business.
Yeah, there's a, there's a multitude thing.
Just my opinion, I mean, I don't know for sure. But if you're just doing a pole barn for storage or whatever, why would you go through the lengths of putting this much money into this? So where, what I'm giving you at is, two hundred and fifty dollars to put balloons on that is nothing.
Could he have an occupancy permit?
No, no, that's.
No, he never pulled permits on the plumbing or any of that.
Is he allowed to use the building at all?
Well, he's in it, I mean.
But I mean, he has no occupancy permit, so he's not in it legally, right?
No, there's a, there's a storage area in the back that has, you know, no separation from front and back. There's a lot of things going on.
So I think we need to come up, not just for this particular case, but for future other things like this. Because if we can't put it on the tax roll, that's not fair to anybody else who has a barn that gets put on the tax roll. Because, you know.
You mean almost like it's graduated, you know, depending on the amount of work?
We have to figure out like some kind of like.
A lot of bonds are based.
Something that. Because it's just like, we're gonna revoke it, we're gonna keep the two hundred and fifty dollars and then what? You know what I'm saying? It just, we need to like have some kind of regulations or something follow up, what we can do for that.
After the building department has exhausted all its remedies, what, what's the next step?
If you built a house and you didn't get an occupancy permit, you couldn't move into it.
No, we had that instance.
They just, they just worked it their own. They just worked it their own.
I think they give insurance on a, on a.
I got one right now.
So, so.
So you're willing to put out that, that's gonna be an occupancy dollar.
Alright, hold up.
And that's gonna be.
Okay, so we, I don't know if we want to touch on this now or towards the end, but we have somebody living in a barn on Lindsay Road, running a generator twenty-four seven.
For three years.
Yeah, no, I know of that in San Delta.
So we can talk about that at the end, but this is like the same thing, I mean. He's not paying taxes on Homestead, he doesn't have electricity.
So there's gotta be something that we can do. So there's gotta be something that we can do.
So if I just may, just add one comment.
Brenda.
I believe that in this particular case, Mr. Smith, that, um, he has been contacted on behalf of the township and our new code enforcement officers by our township attorney's office.
So there is a way, there is something beyond just the bond that would hope to speak to the fire, so to speak.
Right, demolition.
No. That seems to, that seems to be necessary.
So, yes, that's the way it works.
This is, this is not a real commonality, but this does happen to us with some frequency.
Yeah, so, yeah, so our ordinance enforcement official has sent notification and our attorney's getting involved in this case.
This one as well.
The Putty Gut or the Lindsay?
What's that?
The Putty Gut, not the Lindsay.
Okay, okay.
But you're right, Jennifer, I mean, um, as I say, when that got to the assessor's office and the assessor sees something, that's, that's a $500,000 building.
Right.
And we can put no assessment on it.
Right. And that's not fair to any, any other.
But I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking as, as an owner, then how do you go about getting insurance on a building like that? If your insurance company, wouldn't they ask for, for permits or?
Who you know, a lot of times, they do.
Well, you're taking an awful chance, you're taking an awful chance, I would think.
Okay.
Anyway, so you want this bond revoked, I will make a motion to, um, revoke bond, no, or revoke the bond for permit number 4051.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion support to revoke, um, permit, the bond for permit, uh, by 4051, roll call vote.
Um, before I vote, I'm gonna ask a question, are we just revoking it and then we're done?
No, this, well, this is the ordinance enforcement office has it in port.
But I still think for future, maybe not just for this case, but we need to figure something out. Because we shouldn't have to spend money on an attorney every time this, this happens, you know what I mean?
But I don't, I don't know that we have any other remedy but to do that.
Let, let me talk to Chris.
Can't the violator pay the legal fees? Can't the violator pay the legal fees?
If they're not, if they don't.
If you win the case, they, they'll lean on the property. That's.
Alright, I'll vote, um, Anderson, yes. Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Dover, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next one, we have resignation, Norine Gasparrato from the board review, Norine?
I will to accept Ms. Gasparrato's resignation from the board. Thank her for considering being on the board.
Okay, um, any other question? We have a motion support to accept the resignation, Norine Gasparrato from board review, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, next one is, um, is one in Park Bench's request.
So there's been updates, um, on what was submitted to you, so.
So I think we're good.
Are we not? I'd like to just give some updates on, um, the project itself.
Okay.
Mary Jo Alantovic, did I give my address too? 8356 My Zero. Uh, so this Catskill Caps, or no, Caps or Catskill Park benches, um, project has been going on for four years. It's come into a close, it's been, um, um, a huge project. Um, where we are at this point is we have collected, um, I say approximately because we're not away yet, but, um, over a thousand pounds of caps. Um, there is a company that's in Indiana, there were other companies closer, but, uh, this project started prior to COVID and all of them closed down over COVID and the one in Indiana is the one that has reopened and the other ones are referring to them, so everybody's going to them. Um, wide plastic benches, they're extremely durable, they aren't gonna warp, they aren't going to have to be painted, they aren't going to get infested with bugs, they aren't going to splinter, um, and like I said, there's quite a bit of weight to them. There's, they're, they're talking that they last for decades with no maintenance. So with what we've collected of a thousand pounds, that is four park benches, um, blue, that are eight foot long and they also have backs on them, um, there has been, so the market value for a bench like that is over $1,000 each. Excuse me, these benches are the cost of $325 each, um, for the process, because they have to take all those caps and grind them down to little fibers and then they go through the melting and all that whatever. So, um, there are families and local businesses that have offered to donate, um, the cost of a bench for the four benches. Um, and a plaque will be applied to the benches that state donated by and then either the local business or the local family and made possible by Catskill residents. Because there has been hundreds of people who have been collecting these over the last four years. Um, little ladies come in and drop off zip likes, zip bag bags of them once a week or so, I mean, um, toddlers who their parents brought them and it's like, okay, get all the blue ones and put them in this bag and all the, you know, whatever. Um, teaching them community service, which is a blessing to any community. Um, so, you know, it, it's been a really good opportunity for me to meet neighbors and other neighbors to be neighbors. Uh, so it's been a win-win and with the blessings of the community, um, residents, I think it's, it's good to go. So, uh, there'll be one more cap sorting for the finalization of the fourth bench and, um, you know, I think we'll be good to go and, uh, it'll be wrapped up by the end of October.
Thank you for all your effort in that. I do wanna just, um, throw something out there real quick, um, I am on the Facebook pages for a couple of the township Facebook pages and I don't, I don't like how it was handled on there because it made, um, people who don't come to meetings or don't watch them on TV, um, it made it sound like the board wasn't gonna pay for whatever, um.
Well, that's what I was told, I mean, when I called about this, which you have in front of you, I was told, well, I don't think that we have money to pay for that. Instead of saying, need more information or let's talk about it, well, I don't think we have money. So I was put back by, I was, you know, taken back by that response, but I did, I did take that post back off, but I hear you.
Yes, because when you came to the board back in 2020, you asked if you can put a, uh, container to collect them and that's all that we approved, because if it's not in the minutes anywhere, I went back and looked. Um, any kind of money, we have to vote on as a board and there was nothing in the minutes. Um, so a lot of us, and I don't know if all of us, I don't want to speak all of us, I was under the impression that once we collected the caps, it turned out we got matches, that there wasn't any other expenses to go along with it. So for future reference, if any of this ever happens again or if we have other projects, maybe we need to sit down and plan things out ahead of time, so we could be aware of, you know, it's gonna cost this much plus the caps.
Absolutely, absolutely. They, this project started before COVID, I mean, it was 2019, um, and of course, there's a further distance for the delivery now and the cost went up since then because everything has since COVID. So, yeah, it's in hindsight, a whole lot of different things.
It's like a lack of communication and whatnot, but we do appreciate all the hard work from all the residents and I collected caps, my mom and dad collected caps and.
I can't get people to stop, I still have people, I don't have a bunch on the apartment, they, they, they still keep coming knocking on my door. I said, we have enough, thank you so much, but thank you.
Alright, um, next one is Parks and Rec Phase One and Two update. I am working with our, um, our DNR court, Parks and Rec coordinator and, um, they're in the file process, they're gonna get it done this week, uh, doing this. Uh, they've been really slammed because they have a few grants out there that was funded by ARPA money. So in addition to the regular grants they had, the passport grants, their, um, their development grants, they also had Sparks grants and a couple others that, because of the COVID money, so they've been very, very busy this year. So we should be, hopefully be getting, um, final approval this week, I just have to send in some more information tomorrow and our coordinator sends it to her boss and boss signs off on it and we'll be good to go.
When will Mr. Ward be starting, we approve his?
Well, once, once the DNR makes their final approval, then that'll be the green light for Mr. Ward's operations.
Thanks. So have you read these management units? All of this?
Yeah, Six Rivers gave us, um, they broke down our park into, uh, the various sections there. A natural, uh, teacher's assessment and they divided up our township into different sections, what they call management units. And it just describes. Yeah, the park there. It describes the, um, the town, the different, um, um, flora and fauna that you could find in within the park. Very detailed.
And we're going to do what with this?
What, just information that. Any questions or?
A question, I have numerous, numerous. But here's, the good part is, it says how we can help. Okay. We have to go over, we just really do. I don't think, uh, once Mr. Ward gets in there and we can clear that topography a little bit and see what we're dealing with, see what we can, I'm hoping to have, you know, pavilions and things like that on top of all these fragmities and things that are going to be gone. I'm hoping we're not going to get into a situation where people are going to be expecting us to, um, work around all of this.
Well, Phase One and Two, the land is, um, pretty much cleared. It's just that when we go for Phase Three back to the river, that we have that DNR development grant, we're waiting on that. Um, that's where it's gonna be a little bit more extensive.
Is that Michigan Eagle or the DEQ we were talking about?
DNR.
What do you do, DEQ or Eagle? They're showing you some tricks.
I, I'm sure that we will get a lot of help and a lot of advice from Six Rivers. They, they are the experts on all of this, the biodiversity of the forest and. Yes.
Well, our, our park consultant, Pam, she's, she's aware of all these kinds of things, I think, and that's one of the reasons that she's been very good to work with, I don't think she's taken orders from Six Rivers, but Six Rivers was responsible for us being able to get the park in the first place.
Well, these people are very, very, um, knowledgeable.
Lot of prescriptions and maybe we don't want, maybe we do.
When we get the, when we got the park, we had an offer for the 18 acres earned Fredmore Highway. We could have bought the property with the money we already have saved up in the Parks and Rec Village we get from the county. Six Rivers heard about it, matter of fact, it was the Sinclair County Parks and Rec told us about that and they come out. They bought the property to get it off the market as we applied for a DNR development grant volume, which we were successful. In 2019, we opened the park, it's, you can go out there and hike the property. And Phase One and Two are the two passport grants that we, um, received. The passport grants is on your license plates, uh, on your driver's license, if you might, you get that, you go to any state park or DNR boat launch. Those monies user are going to grants to, for park development. We have applied for a Sparks grant, that's a pure COVID, that money from COVID money, ARPA money. I'm asking to pave the park, the only paving that's gonna be there is for handicap parking areas and the sidewalks and that. Other than that, it's gonna be aggregate parking lots and driveways. Our Phase Three is taking it back to the river, we applied for a DNR development grant, we're in the process of it right now. I expect the state soon that we can kind of fine tune and we can get stuff like more letters of support in there to kind of tweak our, our, um, application. We've been working on all these grants with, well, the design of the park and getting that is through our park painter, Pam Blalow, who's designed parks all through the state and she does really good work and she's, I mean, and of course, we have Six Rivers supporting us, we have like the Friends of the Sinclair River. That's another organization that's willing to help and, and a few others in the county that are express interest. So, okay.
They do extensive work here on ecosystems.
Yeah, it's, it's laborious, this, um, you know, to deal with the bureaucracy through the state, but we're getting a lot of money that we wouldn't have had if we developed it. If we had paid for it out of the wrong, it would have took us a long time.
Well, I'm glad.
Okay, alright, uh, citizens' comments. Okay, yeah, we have a bad hike, um, there's gonna be a bad hike at, join us Six Rivers for a free evening bad hike. It's on Friday, September 15th from 7:30 to 9:30. From what I understand, there's one, there's a, uh, a bad expert from U of M that's gonna be leading this. They go down there and they do a bad count. So. They do, there's different groups, I've been told there's different groups that will do counts on amount of muscles that are in the Bell River, uh, for different, is a survey. So this group, it gives out information here, um, there, uh, will use echometers with our phones to monitor the, for the bats. Please call our office at 248-601 or 2860 for email, imp, for information to register, okay?
And bring your mosquito spray.
Yeah.
The higher the content, the better.
Yeah, and it's, um.
They'll find that one spot. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Good, good.
Yes.
Okay, you said rest of comments?
What's that? Well, we're, okay, citizens' comments.
Okay, I have a few, um, this quickly, easy one is, help them, the big beautiful sign isn't lit up.
Because we're working with the sign company there to get it going and stuff.
Oh, I thought it was, I mean, I thought it was.
It was, the sun was, the sun was warm stuff and we lost power. Because the brightness, we can't turn it down and then we had it set up so that it would shut off at 8 o'clock and turn back on at 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
Yesterday we came in and it was on and then it was supposed to come back on this morning, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, so I let them know, I let the sign company know and the software company know. So they already received one letter, if we don't get it fixed, it's gonna go up to another letter.
Or it's gonna go to the attorney.
Well, that's the next letter.
You talked to, um, Michigan Metal, they got the same sign.
And it's bright, it's like ours.
Well, those signs are supposed to have a photometric cell that adjusts the brightness.
That one doesn't, you go down Tony Lane Road at night.
It's bright, nothing.
And that's how ours is too, because when we left here after the meetings, it's bright. So the aliens can find us.
Alright, okay, what's the next question?
As far as the ditching, I know that the new part of Meisner was flooded with all the rain that we got, is that gonna be a priority spot?
Well, they're looking, weren't they? Did they have any?
Oh, it was terrible, it was, I mean, over the entire road.
Well, we have identified, when we did our road tour, around, down multiple locations on Springborn Road need to be ditched.
So that's gonna help the Meisner part too? I mean, that's very new road and now it's getting completely powered.
Meisner, that's a county road that doesn't fall into.
Oh, they know, they were aware of it though, the county engineers were down there looking at that flooding. So I imagine they were, yeah, they were putting their plans together.
Meisner Road in that area, sometimes. Meisner Road in that area, even after they ditched it, when, before they paved it, it floods like that.
Oh, they should know.
I remember the previous area foreman Tom Moore, he put some dye there to see where it went and it returned back to him. It went and circled back around.
Oh, wow.
So.
Okay, um, and, sorry, I have four questions.
The knowledge is gone.
The noxious weed ordinance thing slash national building ordinance, property, whatever.
It's not.
Both of them have.
Lack of interest. Thank God.
No, we, that, we just, we asked them to do something and it's going to be, we're wanting to have something, a grass cutting ordinance. So when something like that, that's it. We're working on something like that.
Okay, because the last planning meeting, which I attended, they went from talking about the noxious weed to somebody suggested, and I don't know what it is right now, national building, property ordinance, whatever. But it was, I mean, I started reading it. That's ridiculous. That doesn't, that's like New York City not here.
Well, when the noxious weed came to us at the board last month, that's not what we wanted.
Right.
We talked about it. What we wanted is like houses that are abandoned or commercial buildings, whatever. There's a house on Sinclair Highway that's up for sale and the grass is, you know, like, and mosquitoes, whatever. That's what we were talking about, not ditches and not fields and, and whatever. So we kicked it back to the planning commission to add it to our ordinance for blight. But when it got put on the agenda, it was worded incorrectly. So everyone thought we were doing the ordinance for the noxious weeds and worms. So it was just supposed to be like a blight.
All right.
I think there might have been a little bit of confusion because they were talking about it at the planning meeting.
Well, if, if the confusion's been cleared up, then the issue's dead.
Okay, right, last thing, sorry, is at the planning meeting, there was people here that wanted to do lavender farm?
Okay, that will be a public hearing on October of 19th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay.
On October 17th.
Yeah, we can't discuss that.
What time?
Seven, seven at the.
Yeah, they have a right to come before and present at a public hearing. We cannot discuss that before.
Okay, and that's going to be here.
But you know what would be interesting? I thought this myself.
All by yourself.
All by yourself. Let's go out to Blakes. Let's do a field trip.
Can we do the, the Blakes line test?
Well, we can do it too. But Blakes has a lavender farm. And they had their lavender festivals and whatever else. I want to see what sort of soil, what sort of growing conditions and drainage they need.
I researched that quite a bit.
Yeah, well, you know, I know what I grow my lavender in and I don't have fields of it, but I know it needs sand and it needs gravel. And I can't, I can't grow my lavender in the same beds that I grow my mums and my daisies and this mess. It's a Mediterranean plant.
Exactly.
So it's going to take some, some doing, but I would like to see a lavender field that is mature.
Successfully functioning.
And successfully functioning. So I think I'll just take myself out to Blakes.
That's a great idea.
And see, there's another lavender.
There's one.
And there's one in.
Because what I read is the only water that that plant requires is at planting time. Because it likes to dry in the sand.
Well, still it'd be very informational. I'm going to go to that meeting and find out. But I'm also going to go and see what a mature lavender field looks like.
Yeah, but let's, Ms. The Body's not here. We need to discuss this issue.
Well, we'll.
We're just.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, in general, because we all grow it.
All right, um, who else wants to address the board? Okay, ladies there?
We all have the same issue. We, we're all complaining about the same neighbor.
Yeah, I know.
I know you know, but I don't know if the rest of them know. My name's Kim Nickish. I live at 9650 Lindsay. Across the way, I have a man living in a barn with no electricity who runs a generator 24/7.
Three years.
Sure, three years. And I know he like buried a cable wire out to the road to meet the cable. And so I just wondered what's, I, I, no, I talked to you, you've been to my house and what, what's going on with that? Because now we're having other issues.
I, yeah, I'm Pam Lowsex and I live literally right next to them. They use our address. We've had people come to our house and wanting their equipment back that they rented. And this guy thought I was lying to him and was getting an attitude with me. And I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. We don't have any part of equipment here unless you're talking about the people that are living over there, they have an address.
Do you live to the east of them?
Yes, yep, 9653 Lindsay, yes. We've been dealing with this for a long time and even more than patient is we, my husband called up the one time because we got, they're using our address, they're sending their mail to us and not even putting their names on it. It's just the residents. So we've opened up a couple things like what is going on? We've given it to them and it's like.
It's very obvious that he lives there. You see him leave, you see him come back.
I, I talked to the owner of it. They, she claims that. And I said, you don't mind if my owners enforce it?
Yeah, they drive all the inside of this barn. I own a horse farm on Lindsay, me and my husband. Um, and we've been here, we've, you know, multiple times to try to figure this out.
Brenda knows we've been involved with Patty.
They leave by pulling into their other pool barn in the middle of the night.
Oh.
Yes, so they never leave. They never leave. I swear, I don't even think they work because they are, somebody's always there, yeah.
It's not fair on anybody's tax dollar. We're all paying taxes for him to live there. I have been, Brenda knows. Me and Patty sat down three years ago. I have been complaining for three years about this guy. And nobody, the, the lawyer, what can't, what can't the lawyer do? He's illegally living in a barn.
The property is in someone else's name than the man who lives there.
Exactly.
So I feel like that's where the hiccup is, but.
Right, yeah, no, it's in a, I've talked to a woman who owns the property.
That's her, that's her husband?
Yeah.
It's her husband. They're not married. They're not married. That's her boyfriend.
We do have a new enforcement officer who's supposedly very, very.
Well, he won't, he won't react to anybody that comes there. I don't know.
No, he just lies. Patty said they kicked him right off the property. They wouldn't let anybody in there.
We watched them leave, somebody came there and then I would watch them come back.
Shut the picture. They got drywall in that pool barn. They got closets built. I mean, give me a break.
So basically, he needs a, he needs a court name. And is that something you guys are willing to do?
I guess, how long does that take? Because I addressed this issue in June. You've addressed it earlier.
Three years ago.
So now I'm, I want to go sit outside. I don't want to hear a generator run. If the power's out, it's okay. If I'm sitting outside reading my book after work, I don't want to hear that. Like, I live out here for a reason. It's just, I guess, how long does it take? What's that, that like, I feel like we should be involved.
He advertises this chicken business as a chicken business. You can't, you guys, he's got cable running to that barn. I mean, he's got to have some address using somebody's address to get Comcast, because she's got proof that he's got Comcast.
This may seem silly to a lot of people, petty, but we live right next to them. It is loud. We have moved bedrooms away from their generator because it is so loud. And then they will also be very petty and take their generator out when we make a public complaint, put it out further so it's even louder for us to hear.
Burning his trash.
Oh, and the smell of the trash.
Yeah, but it's.
Yes. They've had animals come on our property. I know that happens, but it's also. I've got four young kids. They have a giant German shepherd that they order them. It's not very nice. And it has come after my kids one time. There is, we have been very patient, but they are not nice to us. They're very rude and we have done nothing but be nice to them.
Ladies, I will have our, he, he's just recently started. He's working on stuff, but I will put this stuff at the top of the list.
I don't know what to call you out, but you told me that in June and you haven't been there yet and it's not a very.
Can I say one more thing? We are in the process of moving in. Unfortunately, I love the area, but it's very old house. We're moving. We've had already several people come through our house and that is one of the major complaints is the neighbors being there worrying about grow house, worrying about all of their junk that's out there and all of their broken down cars. And it's frustrating because we're scared we're going to feel like move.
Everybody gets involved in this.
All right, um.
Thank you.
Ladies, really quickly, I just want to find out what's happening here because years ago, we brought this all up. The, I think Patty was in charge of that and she went to the township attorney and he was getting involved and then it just died. So what is the reason the ordinance officer can't do much? He's going to go out there and issue citations and do whatever. It's not going to do anything. He doesn't listen to anybody. Well, it goes, it goes first, our ordinance enforcement official's engaged. He makes his first contact and then it's elevated to our attorney. And after that. Right, but it's already been there. It's already been to the attorney.
The problem is that our enforcement officer didn't follow up on stuff. So the one that we have now does. So once he goes out, does his site.
When is that going to occur? I'm going to have, he comes in on Thursday. That'll be the first thing to issue I'll.
Well, I know.
He's aware of the property. This needs to go to court. There's nothing's going to stop him, but actually, and I know you guys laughed about demolition.
She's our witness.
I didn't really.
You tried to say Birmingham or Westwood or anywhere else, they'll knock your building down if you don't have permission.
You guys, you guys are all paying big taxes and so is, so is everybody in this room. He's not paying that tax to have that camper in there.
I can, I can really feel for these people because in my humble opinion, beyond code enforcement, the attorney was involved. The attorney was involved. Our previous code enforcement officer, I don't believe ever was involved. These residents came right to our supervisors.
Sure did.
Can you call the sheriff? I mean, it's illegal, it's illegal.
Civil.
So I'm thinking, you know, I don't sit on your board, but I've heard from every one of these people.
We sat in our office for two hours, me and my daughter and Brenda's eyewitness. And she promised us she was going to take care of it and do the best she can. Here we are.
If he is going to do some, somebody, next guy's going to do it too.
Yeah, why we're not.
They're not pushing anything. Why pay taxes? Let's just have my property, do whatever we want to do.
It's got an outhouse that sits out there. They use an outhouse for their, for their bathroom. They, they burn all their trash. I mean, get a drone out there and watch the guy, what he's doing out there.
There's one at your home over there.
Three years. She's our witness.
He's rented all kinds of excavation equipment and never paid the people. They had to come and repossess all the equipment because he never paid them. He's a suspended, he has a suspended license as a builder. I mean, this guy's just an abscondent.
He clearly doesn't care about what anybody thinks.
But I can really say that I, every word they're saying is true and it's very disheartening.
Patty called me at home and told me that she did call the lawyer and we talked for like 25 minutes and she said, Diane, there's nothing that they, they something they can do. And I'm like, why can't you do anything? It doesn't make sense.
Let's hope that's not true anymore. I don't think it's going to be true anymore. I think that there's a different leadership now. I've been here a long time.
Patty said she went in the park.
There is a different leadership now, a new enforcement officer, a new supervisor, and I think they'll change.
She said it's done to me, Brenda member.
Well, when will the ordinance officer be able to report back? I'm going to talk to him on Thursday morning. He's aware that we drove by and I told him that's an issue that's going to be dealt with. He's dealing with a lot of issues right now.
They have kids living.
Well, has that, has the prior issues been going on for more than three years?
Yes.
That are more important that.
They have children there.
They go like, how are they showering?
That's good for kids.
We will look into it and we'll get back to this, okay?
I mean, once, once a week and I, they're burning their garbage. I mean, it stinks so bad out back.
Have you guys ever called the fire?
I called the fire department. You get $250 fine from the fire department.
He won't pay it.
You guys got pictures of the kids eating at the table.
They don't do anything. They don't care about that.
You don't care. That's what Patty said. He does not care.
But if they get enough expenses there, maybe it won't just be at this level. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have the ordinance enforcement official come take the issue and whatnot on this one.
How are those kids going to school? There's no address.
They're only part-time.
Yeah, I think they're grandkids, right?
So it's his.
Children, right.
But he only has part-time custody.
They're not married. They're two different.
It's just.
And she found out he's using an address in Warren.
Yeah, that's where I talked to the owner of the park.
He's got an address in Warren and that's why they couldn't bust him, saying that he didn't live there because he's got an address in Warren. And he's asking about the election here in Casco. Can't even vote. Can't even vote. How are you even asking about?
He's done to our board meetings when we were having them in the basement when we were coming up here. And he was asking questions as if he was a resident, because I remember.
Well, I mean, he technically is a resident. He's, he's a resident. Shit. Squatted, thank you.
Yes.
I mean, it's not.
No, it's not.
It's not. I mean, there's got to be something to do about this.
There was a gap in enforcement and we.
But that's three years.
In the township and that hopefully is being filled now by a new enforcement officer and a whole different approach to a lot of this stuff. And I'm hoping that you'll have a different experience in the future. I can't guarantee that, but I believe that will.
What experience does the new officer have? Has he been a prior? Yes.
Yes.
He's very good.
He's officer, he's done a lot of experience.
He's done more in the two months that he's been here than 20 years.
He does it for a neighbor and he already has a, a process in place. He also has a professional relationship with our attorney, which is the attorney over in the other community. Yes. So he's.
There's a lot to catch up.
Yeah.
That's a really difficult.
Yeah, I, I.
Did he pull permit to build a house with the?
No, that property, the property was split.
Illegally.
No, it was allowed to happen. The property was allowed, it was a legal split. But the property, unless if one of the pulled barns is tore down, you cannot build a house. Because she called me last summer wanting to build a house in back of the barns. I said, we do not allow that. And.
I think you should let these folks know that our code enforcement procedure will be at least another six week process. It's not going to happen overnight. They've been three years on this. I can't stay silent. I can't stay silent. I think this is beyond code enforcement as a resident. I live here too.
Yeah, it's just not fair. We're all paying, you know, big taxes and I live in this barn, basically.
Probably pays for a thousand dollars. You're going to wait the six weeks and you ain't going to, you ain't going to get an order because you haven't got an order in three years.
If the attorney said that there wasn't anything else you can do, then I think you need a new attorney.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't believe.
She said she got kicked out of the building to the enforcement. He would not let anybody in there.
And that's.
That's kind of an answer. This has got, there's so many things in this drive that seem to be actionable.
They can seize that property if it comes to another court case.
At that point though, if that was set, I don't know that that would be an accurate statement. If you had these pictures, I haven't seen one of them, but if you had these pictures that you gave to the board, I don't believe she would say there's nothing they can do.
But we didn't have them, Brenda, then.
No, but now, now the board does.
Yes.
So maybe that they can't do anything may have been applicable then, but with these pictures, I don't believe she would say that there's nothing you can do.
No, I don't think so either.
With drywall up and, and closets.
But there's, but there's no bathroom.
They got a camper in the pool.
No, they got a camper, living in a camper in the pool barn. Patty said it was so bad.
They took the camper out of the pool barn. Now that's when they drywall it.
Patty said it was so bad in the camper, the smell of, of like cat urine was so bad that she can't believe they were even living in that camper inside that barn. That's how bad it was. So I don't get why it's been three years that they're still there.
If he doesn't let them on the property, then where do you go?
What's that?
If he doesn't allow this off.
To open up the door.
On the property, then what, where do you go?
Well, then I'll have our attorney send it to the owner.
Okay.
Who lives in Warren and we'll work through that because she owns the property.
Okay.
But it's not going to take three years. Sold. So I don't know where that house, she's received anything because the house was sold Warren, that they were technically still living. They're probably falsely using that address too.
They sold it to his daughter, I believe is what it was, or her daughter. So who knows?
All right, so first thing Thursday, I'll be talking to her down this.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
You have to be kept in the loop as this goes forward.
Absolutely. We just want to make sure that it's being taken care of, you know.
It doesn't happen again, it's someone else.
For far too long. Hopefully I can sell my house. Yeah.
And maybe sell it out. I'm gonna be so mad if that's the reason we don't sell.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Far down the road.
All right, yeah.
Talking all this blatant enforcement officer and what the hell he is or isn't, with this township, you know, apparently he must be out making friends in the community. Would this township or consider putting dumpsters here where residents can bring blight or treasures or trash? What makes his determination what's treasure and what's trash?
Well, he bases on the township ordinance, but we have.
What's treasure and what's trash?
It's in the ordinance, Jim.
I don't have the ordinance. But anyway, getting back to the garbage bins out here, would they, you consider getting some low-profile dumpsters for the residents convenience can bring and put in here?
Right now, the Sinclair County landfill, that's where you can, um.
No, 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 go ahead.
You could take up your, um, your garbage up to the Sinclair County landfill on Smith Street Road.
And so much cubic foot?
Yeah.
Why can't the township provide you one here?
We don't have space for it?
You got, you make me the head of the garbage dumpsters. I'll find space there, way in the west side of this parking lot, and I got South Benson.
But the county does provide for trash collection and for.
I know that, but the township can't, and they got your zoning man out there. Everybody don't need a forty-yard dumpster to get rid of a pickup load of trash.
He's doing his work. We authorized him to be our ordinance enforcement official. He's basing his performance.
I'm talking performance of the township to provide a service to the residents.
If we do that, it would cost.
Oh, yeah, that's where the, you don't mind taxing.
The residents have decided a number of times that they don't want us to commission a waste management service. They wanna hire individual private companies to do their waste management. And, and we recently did discuss having a trash day collection. There's a whole lot of issues that maybe aren't obvious, but if somebody dumps a load of hazardous waste in those dumpsters, it's, it's very hard to control those kinds of things.
Why worry?
We deferred, we deferred because we wanted to do that. Kelly brought it up, and we did wanna do that, but when we looked at all the particulars, we felt that it wasn't a practical thing for the township to get.
The township, my cabin is up north. They got right across from my cabin. Be surprised if people are coming.
Well, there's a couple township trauma here that start what you want to do, and then they just continue that.
So many dumpster boxes, plastic tubes in there. I won't use a bad word. It can be really a problem.
I use Jeff's rubbish, and you can just call ahead and.
I got.
Yeah, we do too.
For an extra big load or whatever, it's ten bucks. And they make sure there's enough drivers, no employees, they'll haul it in there, and so does.
But I mean, they give me a service this township up here.
No.
Or don't want. Another question is on that, I think we're gonna get a winter tax bill for drains. Am I under that understanding, an assessment?
For the residents of the township that got that letter, it said to call the drain commissioner on that.
Right, do you have any correspondence with it, if you know any knowledge on it?
I have not spoken to the drain commissioners yet since then.
I was in Germany when they had that meeting that Tuesday, or I would have been then. So this is another tax that would take your money, and you're probably not gonna see squat for ten-foot ditch cleaned out, county drains.
Well, with that grant that you were talking about, would this lessen that, or is that?
No, that's for county drains. It's different. The ditching are for road ditches. They're provided by the road commissioners. Two sides. The road commission does the road ditches. The county does, the county drain commissioner does the drains. Two distinct, different areas.
But yeah, if you can't, if the road ditches can't take the water, guess what the county drains are gonna do? They're not gonna take it easy, 'cause they haven't maintained them since they were dug, probably back in the twenties.
That's not true. We've had, um, we've had a few years since.
A very few, if that's what you're going on. Our ditches in this.
It costs money to, it costs money to, um, clean out drain, county drains.
Really? Yeah. Costs for fertilizer prices and farming costs money too. So we could talk about this till midnight. You might as well save your breath, because nothing's gonna happen on drainage in this township of any magnitude. That's my opinion.
Okay. Right, done, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
For tonight.
Does anyone else?
Always tomorrow, though.
Does anyone else have anything they wanna talk about? Okay.
I do for more comments.
All right.
Ready?
Sure.
Elections. So we have early voting, starting in February, February twenty-seventh, if that's when they decide to do the primary.
Or March.
Or March fifth, or whatever it is. They haven't decided yet. Don't know when they'll decide. But we have to do early voting center required by law. And the county was supposed to get one for Sinclair County together. Um, they decided that they're not going to, so it is up to each municipality to figure out how they're gonna do early voting. So I met with, um, a couple of the other communities last week, and I contacted Columbus Township, China Township, and Wales Township. And I told them that I would be willing to host the early voting center here, 'cause we have to have it for nine days, eight hours each day. So I don't know what's going to come of that, but we're gonna have to make a decision whether or not I do host a, a community one, or I, we have to do it.
This is for the presidential primary?
This is gonna be for any, um, state and federal elections starting in February twenty twenty-four.
So February?
So the school elections, no, and like our local, whatever, no. But state and, and federal, we have to.
So the county said they're not gonna do it?
Yeah. No. So, um, it's gonna cost a lot of money. So that's why I'm trying to get the four different communities together so we can split some of the cost.
Right.
Because you have to have three election inspectors every day for eight hours, or it's probably gonna be more like nine or ten, because they have to be here earlier and stay later and whatnot, so.
States, I'm gonna provide any funding for?
I mean, they, they're gonna do some funding, but eventually, no, it's all gonna fall on us.
Mostly get our equipment, though, 'cause we have to have more equipment now.
Well, with that, with that grant that I just filled out, part of it is for, for workers, so we'll see if we get that. But it's not gonna be continuous. It's like a one-time.
There's a lot of cost on just a lot of work.
So I'm just letting you guys know as a board, where I have some election costs.
All right. So someday we're gonna have to look at the budget. Okay.
Is there a penalty for not doing it?
We have it. It's part of the constitution. It was part of the prop two that they advertised on TV as need to show photo ID. That's all, that's the tagline that they used. So people didn't read everything that was included in there. So now, um, there's a permanent, permanent ballot list. So before, we used to send out absentee applications, and you'd have to sign a back sign saying, yes, please send me a ballot. Now, they have a permanent ballot list, so we send one application, and if they check the box, they will always get a ballot. They only have to fill it out once, and even if they move, supposedly, the, the, the application is supposed to follow them, as long as it's not out of state. So, so many loopholes, because what about people that go to Florida? What about college kids? You know, we're gonna be sending ballots, and, and where are they gonna wind up? But we have to do it. We have to provide postage on the ballots and on the applications to and from, which the state is going to pay for. They got, um, what do you call that?
A permit for bulk mailing.
Bulk mailing permit that they're gonna pay for, but again, I don't know how long that's gonna last. It's probably eventually gonna fall on the township to, on that. I mean, but it's part of the state constitution, so we have to do it, unfortunately.
Okay, all right. Now, what they'll look at that in the budget, the budget will work for it up next year, along with enforcement.
We have, we have three, we have one, we have the president's primary, the regular primary in August, and then the general election in November. And then in May, if there's any school or, you know, local issues, there could be four elections.
Okay, has anyone other board members had comments?
You wanna talk about this? Just if anybody wants to go, let me know.
M T A chip.
We have it right under your thing here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. So anyone wants to go to the MTA chapter meeting on the twenty-first?
No.
Yeah.
It's next week.
Yeah.
Let me know so I can let, let her know.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to try to go. I'd like to go.
Kelly, never mind.
She's going to lavender farm.
There you go, she's gonna wait.
Sure.
Uh, just a reminder, we would appreciate if you could, uh, publicize and.
It will be tomorrow. We'll put it on our website and on Facebook.
Those are Melissa photographs we're still looking for.
Yeah, I'll put that on there too.
Can I get a copy of that too? I'll put it on.
There's one, there's one right here.
Okay.
If anybody else wants, there's copies here.
All right, I have a couple things. Uh, the church road bridge between Sinclair Highway and Division Road will be open at the end of the month. They were supposed to be done this week, but the tremendous amounts of rainfall is, um, has kind of slowed it down. But they're building a really nice aluminum arch. They've been filling it with stone. Those gravel haulers will back up from Sinclair Highway over three quarters of a mile down to where the bridge is being built.
Wow.
Yeah, over three quarters of a mile. I'd say seven eighths of a mile. You're backing up all that way. And you hear the beat going, yeah.
I bet you the residents of the second would be happy when this is done.
Okay, um, I gave the board members a survey of auditing services in communities, and that, um, let me know if you want me to keep investigating. I've already met with Raymond there. He's supposed to send me pricing, what they're supposed to do, and I, I'm gonna contact that bus company and see what they have. I'll bring it back to the, um, the board room there from, um, October, okay? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I think the motion should be. Nine oh four.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.